7:02, I officially open the meeting of the Altadena Town Council. Okay, first on our agenda is our flag salute.
It sure is.
She's getting everybody else in.
We're going to give us a two-minute.
No.
Okay. Okay. Good evening, fellow council members and community, both in person and those who might be watching online at home. I wanted to introduce to you Yasmeen Gada. She's a proud Elliott Husky and a seventh-grade ASB representative. She's an active, she's active in Elliott's Drama Club. She loves public speaking and enjoys helping new students acclimate to campus. Her favorite things this year are her English class and giving the school's daily school-wide announcements. So I would like to welcome her to the podium.
Please stand up and put your right hand over your heart. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, we're going to have a roll call.
Welcome to our meeting. Let's do our roll call. Councilmember?
Veronica Jones.
Here.
Councilmember Darrell Aranda? Councilmember Christopher O'Malley?
Is present.
Thank you. Councilmember Dr. Sandra Thomas?
She's here, Vila.
Present.
Thank you, Dr. Thomas.
Hi, good afternoon.
Thank you very much. Councilmember Ellen Peck?
Present.
Thank you. Councilmember Sylvia Vega?
Here.
Thank you. Councilmember Diane Markison?
Here.
Thank you. Councilmember Victoria Knapp?
Present.
Thank you. Councilmember Amy Lightford?
Excused.
Thank you. Councilmember Nick Arnson?
Present.
Thank you. Councilmember Billy Malone?
Present.
Thank you. Councilmember Hannah Petrie? Councilmember Dorothy Wong is here. Councilmember Doug Cauliflar?
Here.
Thank you. Councilmember Reginald Wilkins?
Present.
Thank you very much. I think we have a quorum. How many are missing? Were you taking a tally for me?
Three are missing.
Thank you, three missing. We have a quorum.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Okay, we move on to our, get our agenda approved, September 20th, 2022 meeting agenda.
Good evening again. Councilmembers, the Altadena Town Council Executive Committee met on Tuesday, September 13th, to set the agenda for tonight's meeting. The agenda was circulated to you on Saturday, the 17th. I have received the following changes. And there will be many, so please bear with us. The Senator has another meeting, so we are going to move his presentation to item number two. So after we approve this, then we will invite him up. So if you could move that up. Both Officers Boyd and Bay are out of town, and Captain Moulton had a prior commitment, so there will be no CHP report tonight, so you can delete that from public safety reports. There will be no ACAB report tonight, so you may really remove that from community reports. Then, under committee reports, please change item 6.3 to education and move communication to 6.4. That's the amended agenda I sent you, yes, but not the one that went out things.
Education or election?
It's, education, it should say land use, safe streets, education, communication, election. Election is 6.5. And all of its sub-items become 6.5 whatever. And then we need to correct the spelling. There is an R in Stuart Gordon in the original agenda that I sent out, and there is a T at the end of triplet. There should be two Ts. Those are my changes. Does anyone else have any other changes?
The quote of the one I have, which I think I printed out the latest one, I have a second 6.4 at the end, which is a duplicate.
Yeah, you can take it out.
Take it out.
Just move it, yes.
I'm going to accept the agenda as amended.
Second.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Any abstentions? The agenda is accepted as amended. Okay, we're going to move right on to our guest speaker. Our guest speaker tonight has made public education, mental health, sensible gun control his priorities during his time in office. His accomplishments include increasing funding for special education and the K through 12 local control funding formula. He has authored legislation that created California's umbilical cord blood collection program, pushed back school start time for middle and high schools, banned the open carry of handguns on California streets, raised the purchase price of firearms to 21, and placed the suicide hotline number on student ID. In addition, his efforts have created a science fellowship in the state Capitol and established a unique partnership between the University of California and historically black colleges and universities. In addition, he personally negotiated the end of the 710 freeway tunnel with the Brown administration and authored SB 7, which formally ended the threat of the freeway. He has served as mayor of La Cañada and spent eight years on their city council. He was honored with the title of legislator of the year. You just need to go to his webpage to see all the legislation that, no, okay, all the legislation that he's authored. No, I need to tell them about you. He has been awarded the Celebrating Children Award by the Sycamores, the Champion of Reproductive Freedom Award by Planned Parenthood, and the Policy and Legislative Leadership Award by the California Mental Health Advocates for Children and Youth. That's just a few. He currently serves as Chair of the Senate Appropriations Committee. If that's not enough, somehow this guy finds time to ride his bike, sometimes over 25 miles. So tonight, I have the pleasure of welcoming the Senator of California's 25th State Senate District, Senator Anthony Portantino.
Thank you. Thank you. You left out that I'm a big lover of Altadena.
Yeah, first, that should have been first.
Thank you, Madam Chair. And actually, over the weekend, I just moved to Burbank, so I rode my bike from Burbank to Altadena over the weekend. I had a meeting at Perry's Joint, so I rode up there. Dorothy's of good inspiration for me, because I've joined her in the Altadena neighborhood ride of the last two years. We've ridden through Altadena, and that's always been great to see the home tour on a bicycle. So thank you, Dorothy, for inviting me. And I have to say, this year, I'm carrying a bill, SB 932, to create more bike safety throughout California. And the first phone call I made when I said, you know, I want to do something on bike safety was to Dorothy. And so we talked, and so the town council has influence over the legislation we do based on all of you. And this past week, I had lunch with Billy and his daughter, so, you know, getting more input from young people. I heard from Billy, but his daughter was the real rock star.
Way more interesting.
Way, way more interesting. So that was a great lunch as well. And also was happy to join the library and celebrate the library's historic occasion this year. And we got the Taste de Dina coming up, right? So I'll be, I'll be there for a little while. I will eat and then run. But it's great to be back. And you all know Dominic Corey from my office. Where's Dominic? In the back. So Dominic does, yeah, let's give it up for Dominic. He does a great job representing me. I like to say he works, so I don't have to. And so it's a good partnership. So thank you for always welcoming Dominic. And for the record, he's a bullbug, not a Mustang, so if you're all keeping track, you know, of that, we got to make sure we mention that right, Dominic?
Always.
Always. Who's going to win the game this year?
PHF.
PHF. Did you hear that? He threw down. He threw down already. So it's great to be back in Altadena, and obviously I see my good friend Anne Marie Higginbottom from Chris Holden's office here as well. So she obviously joins us in wishing Altadena well. And it's just good to be here. And just to give a legislative update, obviously, we talked a little bit about bike safety as a, I'm a pandemic peddler. I never thought, after four decades of sitting on a couch eating ruffles, that I would get up every day and ride for three hours, and now I do. And it's been, it's been great. And so obviously, we want to make sure that our communities are safe, both for our pedestrians and for our bikers, and all those folks who take alternative methods of transportation. As you know, during the pandemic, we all worked from home. And so, you know, walking and biking and getting around on our feet was much more prevalent, and we want to make sure that the communities change as we adopt more and more of that going forward. For me, I've tried to spend most of my time in office focused on education, mental health, gun safety has been mentioned, and active transportation this year as well. Support for the entertainment industry has been also something very important to me. And last year, we were able to increase California's tax credits to keep filming in California, and there's a number of folks in the industry that live in Altadena. And so that is important, and not to mention all of the locations that people shoot in Altadena and Pasadena and throughout the San Gabriel Valley. So it's important to keep that industry here. I was surprised to learn a few years ago that when it came to school absences, if you had a cold or a broken leg, those were approved absences. But if you had anxiety, depression, bipolar, mental health, behavioral health issues, those were not approved absences. And so I changed California law to make mental health treated the same way as physical health when it comes to approved absences. And one of the things that underscored why this was important is I had a meeting with one of the major newspapers, an editorial board, and one of the editors during the meeting said, well, what happens if a parent lies on the note? And I go, the fact that you don't assume a parent would lie because Johnny has a cold and you would think they would lie because Mary has anxiety underscores why we need to demystify and destigmatize mental health and why we need this bill. The fact that you would ask such, this is a technical term, a dumb question like that, underscored the need for the bill. And so we were able to do that. We've been working hard on helping teenagers learn about mental health. One of the observations I've made about young people today, and I know you'll agree with this, is this generation is far more nurturing of their peers than past generations. They really do care about each other. And so they advocate, they protect, they look out for one another. And so we passed the bill last year to make mental health part of health class, to arm kids with information about mental health, so they can be more effective advocates for themselves and their peers. And so that was signed by Governor Newsom. So I'm very, very proud of that. Obviously, drinking water is important, and we've got a bill on the governor's desk to create a way to regulate chemicals of emerging concern through the process. We passed a law a few years ago to regulate microplastics in water, and so we're continuing to work on our water safety. Obviously, we talked a little bit about gun safety and gun control, you know. The Second Amendment was created so you could protect your home. Doesn't mean you can go out in public and infringe on other people's rights. It doesn't mean you should go to a school and kill people. And so obviously, as has been mentioned, I raised the gun purchase age to 21 in California, and I wrote California's safe storage laws, which is also important, because most of the school shooters acquire that weapon from the household. And so two months ago, President Biden called on us to pass a safe storage law nationally. I was pleased to have passed it in California. And then this year, Governor Newsom signed a bill to require school districts to then educate their parents about what it means to safely store your weapon and make sure that they understand that there's liability if that weapon falls into the wrong hands. And Governor Newsom wanted us to fast-track that bill, and he signed that into law. The second component of the bill, and we saw in Michigan, when a school district received information of a credible threat on campus and then didn't do anything, and then the shooter went to school and killed people. It's understandable that an administrator or principal might hesitate. They may say, you know what, that's not going to happen here. Or what if we're wrong, we're going to anger parents if we, if we follow these, these social media threats? Well, I decided to take that decision out of their hands, and I said, if you receive information of a credible threat, you must investigate it. You know, I'd rather err on the side of investigation and preventing something than looking the other way and having something happen. And so the governor signed that bill as well. I love to point out to folks that many of the bills that I introduce are suggestions I get from constituents. The very first bill that I introduced back when I was in the state assembly to set up California's umbilical cord blood collection program came from a mom whose son was the first UCLA cancer patient who had his leukemia cured because of an cord blood transplant. And so when I learned more about why we don't have a public bank, I set up California's umbilical cord blood collection program, and it cures not only leukemia but sickle cell anemia and 68 other blood-related cancers. And that came from a conversation from a mom just two miles from here. In the La Cañada post office, a mom came up to me and said, you know, we waited till we were 40 years old to have our first mammogram, because that's what the doctors told us to do, and lo and behold, a number of us have breast cancer. Waiting till 40 was too late, because we had family history that said we should have been detected earlier. And so based on that conversation, I changed state law to say that your family history and your predisposition should determine whether, when you get your first mammogram, not arbitrary age. This year, a mom emailed me and said, I went for my routine mammogram, and the doctor prescribed a follow-up image, because he didn't like, she didn't like what she saw. And guess what? The initial mammogram is covered by insurance, but the follow-up doctor-prescribed imaging was not covered by insurance. And so she had to weigh whether I'm going to go out of pocket $800 to pay for it or take a risk of not having early detection. And some women pay, and some take the risk. And guess what? If you take the risk and you develop cancer, your life could be cut short. And so based on that suggestion from a constituent, we have a bill on the governor's desk to require insurance to cover those follow-up imaging when prescribed by their doctor. And I share that, because we shouldn't be shy in how we relate to our local and state government. And I know nobody in this room, Victoria, you're not shy. Dr. Thomas, you're not shy. Billy, I don't know. Maybe. But, you know, we should use the opportunities that we have when we discuss, when we meet folks, you know. Not every idea we get is great, but every now and then, we get a really good one, and it's important to have that conversation. Should I share that with folks? Don't be shy when you see myself or Mr. Holden around town. You know, pull us aside and share your perspective, because it makes a difference. So I'm happy to do that. I'm pairing up with City of Hope this year on another bill, because, again, during the pandemic, we saw access to healthcare, there were huge disparities. And one area where there's a significant disparity is certain people have access to cutting-edge technology, have access to clinical trials, have access to City of Hope, but Medi-Cal patients don't. And so why should Medi-Cal patients not have the same ability to seek the most cutting-edge medical care when it comes to cancer? And so we have a bill on the governor's desk to allow Medi-Cal patients to get the best care available. And we worked that out with the insurance companies. Some moms of children with fetal alcohol syndrome came to me this year and said, did you know that there's not an IEP in school for fetal alcohol syndrome? You only get an IEP if your child has other issues, not because of fetal alcohol syndrome. So that misdiagnosis leads to differences in their care, because they might have their IEP because they have autism, or they're on the spectrum, or other things, but not the treatment tailored to their fetal alcohol syndrome disorder. And so we have a bill on the governor's desk to say those children with FASD should have their own IEPs. You may have read that Burbank, Glendale, and Pasadena have a number of affordable housing projects sitting on the shelf and wanted to create a joint powers authority to deal with the affordable housing crisis. And so I created a joint powers authority between the three cities, and we were able to get them $23 million in the state budget to help them pay for the affordable housing backlog that they have in their, in their, in their thing. So we're working hard on that. Another fun bill that came to me from the Glendale Environmental Coalition, and Billy, you and I are the only two old enough to remember when there were dishwashers in our schools. Somebody had the bright idea in the 80s that it would be more sanitary if we got rid of the dishwashers and we went to paper products and disposable products. And since then, schools create enormous amount of trash, because they're, you know, using paper and plastic one single use, and they're creating tons of trash. And so there was a pilot in Glendale where they put a high-capacity, high-energy dishwasher, low-water, you know, high-intensity dishwasher, and they bought plates, knives, and forks. And they started reusing them. And they saw their costs went down, their custodial expenses, their trash all went down. And so I have a bill to retrofit school kitchens with a dishwasher on every campus. And we're hoping the governor signs that. But that, again, was a suggestion that came out of, out of Glendale. Through the mental health crisis, we also see that our kids are struggling. Three out of five teenagers think about suicide. That wasn't the way it was when I was in school. We didn't have the numbers like that. And for the LGBTQ plus community, it's even more dramatic. And so I have a bill to create a grant for every high school to have a wellness center on every high school campus and have professionals on campus to deal with student wellness. And I'm hoping the governor signs that. We see a disparity in Cal grants in California, where if you go to University of Laverne, which, by the way, is more diverse than UCLA, and you get through in four years versus five or six years, students at nonprofit colleges in California were not getting the same Cal grants as students at public colleges. Now, I support the Cal grants for the public colleges, but when you have all of these great nonprofit, I'm not talking about the for-profit colleges, I'm talking about the nonprofit colleges that have a diverse population. Many of their students are first-time college families, English learners, immigrant families. They should have the same Cal grants. And so this year, we were able to adjust Cal grants, so those students have the same Cal grants across the board, because it's an access issue. So those are some of the bills that we've done this year. Obviously, with a $97 billion surplus in the budget this year, we did a couple things, I think, pretty, pretty smart. We socked a bunch of it away for a rainy day, so our reserves are bigger and healthier than ever before, because we're not always going to have such a healthy year. But we also invested in public education like we've never invested in it before. The community colleges, Cal State, and UC received significant investment in also K-12 education, including mental health and other support services related to, to Prop 98. I was able to also secure a few grants for some other laudable nonprofits for the district, and, you know, we were able to invest in our infrastructure. I had a bill to create more parks and open space funding, and we had such a great budget that we were able to put it in the budget, and we didn't need to do a bond to do it. And so we've tried to be prudent. It's been a great partnership between the legislature and the governor, and I just wanted to be here to share a few things with you. And I know you may have some questions for me. And so thank you for letting me come talk to you.
Oh, thank you. Thank you. Do we have any questions?
I just want to say thank you for calling me over.
I do remember dishwashers.
Yeah, I remember, I mean, when I was in, they washed the plates, knives, and forks, and then somebody had the good idea to say, get rid of all that and go disposable.
They used to cook.
They used to cook, too, yeah.
We don't do that anymore.
Okay.
Okay, Chris?
Senator, thank you for being here. I love what you do, and thank you for everything you do for the community. I was wondering if anything was happening with SB 830, the enrollment funding?
Yeah, we're going to bring it back next year. As you, I don't know if you followed it, but the Chair of the Assembly Education Committee didn't like it. And in the Senate, we have a policy where all bills get a hearing. In the Assembly, they leave it up to the Chair, and he knew it would pass. And so the only way to keep it from passing was to not give it a hearing. And so, as you know, in California, we fund education based on average daily attendance. And what happens is you budget based on enrollment, you know, you plan based on enrollment. And so it costs the same to run a classroom, whether you have 20 kids in that classroom or 18 kids in that classroom. And so if you're basing it on attendance, if you have absences, then you're penalizing a school without reducing their cost. And so if you do it based on their enrollment protection, projections, it's a much fairer way to budget. And almost every state, but I think Mississippi, Texas, and Idaho, do it based on enrollment. So why is California with Texas, Mississippi, and Idaho?
Wow.
On anything?
What company we keep.
And so, you know, we're going to bring that back next year.
Okay, thank you.
It's a better way to do it.
For sure.
Which every other state has, except those few have figured out.
Mississippi.
Mississippi, yeah.
They're known for their education system.
Yeah.
Any other questions?
No, but I do want to call out moms, because every, a lot of the suggestion came from moms, and moms really do a lot. And so I appreciate that you have a good ear.
Well, you know, I was raised by my mom.
[laughing].
You know, my dad died when I was 11. And now I used to look like my mom. I used to say we had the same tailor. But, you know, I was the youngest of four, and, you know, she's why I am what I am. And so, you know, of course, my, my spouse is a dynamic mom as well, and so I try to listen to her, though she would say I don't listen to her as much as I listen to the other moms, but that's a whole nother issue. But thank you, Victoria.
I think we have a question from someone in the audience. We'll take one.
Could you please expand a little bit on the affordable housing? I'm concerned that you've been in those three cities, and could you define what you mean by affordable housing?
Well, the three cities Burbank, Glendale, and Pasadena have now created a joint powers authority between the three cities, where they're going to cooperate on a regional approach to building more affordable housing in those three cities. So they're going to pool their resources, their planning, their energy, and their efforts on a regional plan. And then the state invested $23 million to stake them in that effort.
What is affordable?
Well, affordable, it's all based on income, there's, there's state actual classifications of low-income, moderate-income, affordable. Those are all, those are all formulas that the state has, and so they're going to follow those formulas as they, as they do it. And they have a number of projects in the pipeline, they just didn't have the resources to get them over the top. And so the cities have to, in some cases, subsidize the developers to create the affordability, so it's not market rate. You know, market rate means whatever people will pay.
So affordable, it's based on income. Do you know what that range is?
It's, I don't know, do you have the answer to that?
But what I want to say, good evening, everybody. I want to piggyback on what she's, she's saying. When most people hear affordable housing, they're really thinking about low-income.
Right.
Because most of the housing that they're building, they tell people affordable, but they have to go by the federal guidelines for income, and most, and the minimum income most of the time is like $50,000 a year. So that really prices out most of the people, because they're not making that money per year.
Well, the state requires every city to have both low, moderate, so the state requires all those thresholds. This is going to help the cities meet that, so.
But even with those thresholds, most of the time, they may only allot nine, 10 units, a very low number of units.
Well, in this case, the cities have thousands of units in the planning process, so I'm expecting more than nine or 10 out of them. I'm expecting big things. And they, you know, I have to say, they've been trying, and so this is going to help them free up some of that. So we're also talking to them about whether they want to have the ability to raise more revenue, too, which is also important. You want to have a sustainable budget on this. So I think it's a good thing that they're coming together to deal with it on a regional effort, so.
Okay, I, I am going to end the questions there, but I do have something I want to ask you, and it's not a question, it's just a thought I want to put in your head. And I know that you are real good about giving money for parks, and I am lobbying for Charles White Park. I know this year's budget is over, but I know that there's a new budget year coming, and I would like you to consider putting Charles White Park in your budget. We have some, we are promised some money, but it's not enough.
All right.
Okay?
I will put it on the list and take that, take that to heart, so thank you.
Okay, and I'll follow up, but thank you.
Thank you. That was. Thank you. That wasn't a promise.
I know. I want to thank you, and thank you for being here and taking out time out of your busy schedule. Yeah, the first time I met you, you were serving gelato at City Hall.
At City Hall, I remember that.
Yeah, that was years ago.
Yeah, we did, we did an Italian day, and we served gelato.
Yes.
I am Italian, if anybody didn't notice. Thank you. Everybody have a great night.
Thank you.
Good to stay after your daughter. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. And thank you, Dominic. Okay, we're going to move on, on our agenda. And now we're on item number three. And that's the chairman's report. I have just something very, very short to say, and I just wanted to make it a public announcement, because I feel so much gratitude for the people that I sit up here with and the work that they do outside of this meeting. Every one of you here sitting up here with me tonight, I want to say job well done. And I got that from a constituent who wrote it in about the town council. And I believe that this town council has proven itself to be an asset to this community and to the county of LA. I appreciate your willingness to serve our community. It is my pleasure to be your chair. So I say again, thank you. That's it.
Thank you.
Okay, next on the agenda.
Thank you, Victoria.
I thought, I thought my job was over right there. Okay, next on the agenda is the Vice Chair's report. And that's Vice Chair Victoria Natt.
Thank you. Community, the Altadena Town Council welcomes your input. So if you would like to make public comment, there are comment cards on the back table that you can fill out and at any time during this meeting. And you will see later on in the agenda that there is a, a part on the agenda for public comment. If you do have a public comment card, just hand it to someone at one of the ends of the table, and they'll pass it in. And then when the public comment time is on the agenda, then we'll call you up to make your comment at the microphone. Let's see. Today, September 20th, marks the 10th anniversary of, and the return of National Voter Registration Day. Election Day is November 8th, 2022. Please register to vote. You can do so at a variety of places, but especially today, you can register at nationalvoteregistrationday.org. Also, Hispanic Heritage Month is celebrated from September 15th to October 15th. The celebration starts mid-month because September 15th marks the independence anniversary of five countries: Costa Rica, Nicaragua, El Salvador, Honduras, and Guatemala. The Town Council joins celebrating all Altadenans of Hispanic descent, and we thank you for the cultural richness you bring to this community. Finally, today is IT Professionals Day. So I wanted to do a quick shout out to my husband, Chris, who is the Director of IT for Planned Parenthood of Pasadena and San Gabriel Valley. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Okay, next we have Recording Secretary Nick Aronson.
Thank you, Chair. Council, you received the minutes for August 16th, 2022 this week. I received no corrections. Are there any tonight? Seeing none, I, I, I have moved that we vote, that we accept the minutes as given.
Is, is there, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those oppose? Abstentions?
I should have explained that I wasn't particularly.
Okay.
Okay. But you watched it.
I did watch, yeah.
It's okay.
Okay. Okay, one abstention.
Got it.
Okay, so the motion carries. Okay, we move on to our Treasurer's Report.
Okay, Treasurer's Report. For the period from July 28th, 2022 until July 28th, sorry, August 29th, 2022, we started the period with $924.55. GoDaddy took $13.99 of that for the website fee, and there was a monthly maintenance fee of $12. And we ended up the month, or the period, sorry, with $898.56. That is a little low. And I would like to take this moment to remind everybody that this is a volunteer organization that depends entirely upon the donations of the community. And if you would like to help out, please feel free to put some money in the can.
Chris, there is that check applied.
I know. I also got some cash in deposit, but I haven't done it yet.
Okay. Okay, we're going to move right along here to our corresponding Secretaries' Report. Councilmember Wong.
Thank you, Chair Jones. So let's just go over some amazing events happening at the end of this month. It's not over, it's still September. So September 21st through 28th, or and 28th, so September 1st and 28th. Don't forget, the Altadena Farmers Market needs you. Attend the market. The more we frequent the market, the more vendors come, and that will help sustain our market. Also, on October 1st, the Farmers Market, along with Mariposa Junction, will resume the first Saturday. 9:27 will be a Tuesday at 7 o'clock, and that's the ACONA meeting. And if you haven't gotten enough information yet on our new trash service, Universal Waste Management, VP Matt Blackburn and Michelle Nussham, the Compliance Manager, will be featured speakers. Again, this is a Zoom meeting, so just go to A-C-O-N-A online.org, and you'll be able to get the information. Filming in Altadena will be another topic covered, as well as drought and fires in Altadena. So check that out. And then as we go into October, just some highlights. October 3rd through 8th is the first-ever Altadena Clean Air Week, coordinated by Altadena for Clean Healthy Air. And there are amazing events going on. We've got nature walks with the Altadena Library. Wednesday is Walking Wednesday. So we're encouraging schools to walk to school, and a variety of other activities. So that will be on our website. You can check out the links. On October 22nd, we have Dance, Dance for Hope America at Farnsworth Park. If you want to get involved in that, the flyer will be on the website, childrenofoneplanet.org. Check that out. And I'm sure we're going to have lots more fun. Elliot is doing an October 8th Mulching the Walkway. So lots of fun stuff. Check out altadinatowncouncil.org calendar, and then you can send me an email at dorothy, D-O-R-O-T-H-Y, dot Wong, at altadinatowncouncil.org. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Councilmember Wong. We're going to move on to number four on our agenda, Public Safety Reports. Can we have our Altadena Sheriff's Station?
How's everybody doing?
All right.
First, I want to start off by introducing someone. He's our Operations Lieutenant, new Operations Lieutenant here at the station, Dion Baty. I've known him for a while. We've worked together when we were young sergeants at Compton, Making Mistakes, you know? But he's a good guy. I'm going to just introduce him, and then I'll give my report.
Hello, everyone. I'm happy to be here. Thank you, Jabari. I am new here. I've been here about a month now. I've met a few of you at the National Night Out a few months ago, and this recently, this past weekend, at the Town Hall Meeting. And again, I'm happy to be here. I've been on the department now for a little bit over 20 years. And I have maybe about 10 to 15 years' experience in patrol. Like I said, I met, like my captain said, we met at Compton. I was the Service Area Sergeant at the, at Compton Station. So I'm quite familiar with the community and getting to know the community as well. I was also a community partner deputy over at the Sentry Station, where I integrated with youth in the inner city, putting together youth football teams and baseball teams. I'm a former athlete myself in college. But again, I'm happy to be here. Thank you for having me. And I look forward to meeting more of you in the future. Thanks.
Yeah, I'm really lucky to have him here. Baty, he has, like you said, a big background in community relations, service area work, which is something that we need here in Altadena and want to keep here. So the community likes us, and we aim to keep it that way. And I think he's going to do a great job. So, thank you. So just, I'll be real quick. Some of the crime stats for the month are aggravated assaults, those are our violent crimes. They were slightly up this month. But most of them are domestic violence issues. And the ones that weren't, nearly all of them, there were arrests made. So at least we either named the suspect, or had them named, or may, actually made an actual arrest. That's a good thing. Our property crimes in total are down 1%. However, our, the main problem we have, it's been a problem for a while, are vehicle thefts, people breaking into vehicles. And we're seeing that it's mainly an issue for the past couple of months on the hiking trail in, on Chaney Trail, Chaney Trail. So the times at first, we believed were between 10 and 2, but I was corrected. It's mainly between 9 and 12 where people are getting their, their cars broken into. And I read a lot of the reports, or at least summaries of the reports, and I'm amazed at how many people bring valuable materials to go hike. My suggestion is to try to keep that at home. And I'm talking like expensive computer stuff, an expensive guitar, you know? I'm not, maybe they were going on their way to work or whatever, but try to keep some of that expensive stuff out of your car. Also, just know that we are trying to put together operations where we will be in the area during those times. We've started last month. We haven't had much success on catching anyone. But our sergeant is seeing the break-ins starting to trend down. So just that presence is helping a little bit. So we're going to keep that up. It's just a matter of having personnel every day around those times. It gets kind of hard, especially when we have calls for services. But we'll stay on top of that. There was an incident I'd like to talk about that occurred about two hours ago. There was a shooting at Fair Oaks Burger. That's on Fair Oaks and Calaveras. Fortunately, no one was hit. We have, believe it was two people shooting at each other, possibly car to car, in the parking lot of the Fair Oaks Burger. And we searched for hospitals. We couldn't find any victims as of yet. But the investigation is fairly new, and we have some things to work off of. So we're going to continue that. But fortunately, the good thing is no one was, at least, we don't believe anyone was hit. A couple of, well, one thing I want, issue I want to talk about, for the past month or so, I've been getting a lot of calls and complaints about marijuana dispensaries. I talked a little bit about it at our Town Hall Meeting Saturday, but I want to just mention it today. Our marijuana dispensaries are not permitted in unincorporated Los Angeles County. Altadena is all unincorporated, so it's not permitted here. However, we do see a few of them, and we've identified at least three that we know of. And we know where they are. However, we're instructed by our department to let our Narcotics Bureau deal with them. So we are instructed to let them know where they are, and then they will get to them. But the problem is, they have to deal with all of the marijuana dispensaries in all of Los Angeles County. So once they get to Altadena, they will be hit. Over the past two months, they shut down three. And one of the places, they had to shut it down twice. Because once we shut it down, they'll just open it right back up. But I do want to mention, there is an app on, for public works, that people can go and make their complaints about a number of things, illegal dumping, graffiti, and now they're including marijuana dispensaries. So if you do see one, I left a few flyers in the back. There is an app for Los Angeles County Works. So you just go to your, however you bring up an app, and look for Los Angeles County, The Works. And then you can actually report things like that, including marijuana dispensaries. From what I understand, in November, I believe there's going to be a vote to decide whether or not the county will tax those dispensaries when they do allow them to permit it, to be permitted. So it is coming. They are going to be legal pretty soon. But until then, we'll stay on top of them. So when we find out about them, we will shut them down. Two events I want to talk about. The first one is on October 1st, there's a pancake breakfast at Grocery Outlet Market. It's from 8:30 to, it may be 8 to 10:30 in the morning. And we did one maybe in May. It was a good success. It's $5 for the breakfast, pancakes, sausage, coffee, juice, pretty good deal for five bucks. So if you get a chance, come out, again, that's October 1st. It is being sponsored by the Rotary Club of Altadena. They're very helpful, very supportive. And the proceeds will be going to Christmas Tree Lane Association, Altadena Community Garden, our mountain rescue team, and the Mounted Posse. Those are the guys on the horses. The next event is Drug Take Back Day. Every six months, they try to do this. So we're jumping on board. Again, we had one six months ago. This is October 20th. So we will be collecting prescription drugs, prescription medication at front of the station. We are allowed to make our times, and we're setting on those times. So I'm going to go ahead and set them for like 9 to 2, 9 to 2 in the afternoon. But I'll get some information out to the Town Council for specific times. But we believe it's going to be between those times. So that's October 20th of next month. And that's all I have to report unless there's any questions. Yes, ma'am.
I just wanted to say welcome to our new Operations Lieutenant and to invite him to come east in Altadena.
East Altadena.
Oh. He spends a lot of time in west Altadena.
Oh, he does?
Yeah.
I haven't seen him over there.
So anyway, yeah. We'd love to have you over. Let me, let us know. We'll take, Sylvia and I'll take you on a little tour. Okay.
Come over if you can.
Yeah, exactly. Our way.
Okay. Okay, Billy?
I just, I just want to make a comment. You were talking about the legal dispensaries.
Yes.
And I, I just want to make a comment. They're, they're also, being illegal, not regulated. And that includes their product. So I would strongly suggest, if, if you're inclined to go visit, go visit a legal dispensary because that is an unrelated, unregulated product. You have no idea where it's come from. Probably an illegal growth. You don't know what's on it. You don't know what's in it. And if you care about your health or your reasons for going to a medical and everything else, make sure you're getting the right thing. Please don't support the illegal ones because you don't know what's, what you're getting.
Exactly. The, the regulations state that there can be a certain amount of THC and the product that they put out. And we're seeing that the ones that aren't permitted are putting in 10 times more than what they're supposed to. Also, a while back, we put a post, they're packed, the way they're packaging the stuff, it looks like candy. And if someone were to drop this on the ground or, or leave it laying on a table, a young kid can think it's actually M&Ms, the way they're packaging it, and, and ingest that stuff. So.
I've also heard the pesticide levels or toxic levels and things like this because none of it's regulated.
Yes, it's, so, thank you.
Thank you.
Any, any more questions?
Pancake breakfast is back there in the back of folks.
Great. And then also I have the flyers for the, the app, if you're interested in the back too. Thank you for having me.
Okay, thank you. Thank you for that report. And I know that works. It really wor, that app, it really wor, that app, it really works. I use it. Yeah, I use it all the time. Yes. So it does work. Okay, so we're going to move right on to our LA County Fire, Marie Grekin.
Hello. Okay, for the month of August, in Altadena, we had a total of 336 responses. 286 of those were for medical calls. And of that, we transported 212 patients to hospitals. We had three fires during the month. On Woodbury Road, we had a accidental electrical failure. It actually never materialized into a fire, but it gets coded that way. So there were no damages from that, other than that outlet. We had a trash fire on August 11th on Fair Oaks Avenue. And then we had on August 14th, a 50-foot by 50-foot spot on the grounds of the cemetery on Woodbury Road. The cause of that was undetermined. So we don't know. There were seven traffic collisions during the month, and those are all listed for you. And I just wanted to announce, it's not happening yet, I'm just teasing you. We are implementing a new evacuation platform called Zone Haven. And what we're doing is dividing Altadena up into various zones. And those zones will have names for them. And we'll have a big public education campaign when we're set. But the beauty of this is that everybody will be looking at the same maps when we're determining what areas. And we're primarily using this for wildland fires, although it can be used for any kind of emergency. So if we needed to issue evacuation warnings or evacuation orders, we would do it by zones. The law enforcement has access to these zone maps. The Office of Emergency Management has access to the zone maps. So when we tell them, we're evacuating this Millard Zone, you know, whatever it is, they can, they can look at that zone on the map, and they can get the emergency alert out to those folks right away. And then what's even more beautiful about this program is that the public will have access to these maps as well. So everybody's going to be looking at the same maps. They're already pre-identified as this particular zone is north of, south of, east of, west of. So nobody has to do any guesswork. And I, I think it's going to really help. The public will be able to look at those maps and, at any time, and they'll be able to see what the status of their zone is. If their zone is under an evacuation warning, or an evacuation order, or a shelter in place order, or whatever it is. So it's, it's exciting. I see a lot of promise in this program. I've been, I've been working on this for about eight months now. And we're getting to the finish line. So we're, we're almost ready to go live with it. Not, not quite yet. So like I said, I'm teasing you. And that is it. That's all I have unless there's any questions.
Any questions? Okay.
Victoria?
If we registered for NOAA radio and we didn't pick it up, because what, how do we get it?
Everybody who registered and did not pick it up yet, I have all those email addresses. I will, as soon as I set a date and a location and a time, all of those people in my database will get an email letting them know what the date, time, and location is. And hopefully I remember to put it in the email. If for some reason they can't make it to that, they can send a friend or a neighbor to pick it up for them.
Okay, great.
Okay. Any more questions?
To add to that, anybody that hadn't gotten one, there will be a later distribution.
Yes. I'm, I'm gonna, I'm gonna set one up.
A second one. I just want to applaud, because those beautiful radios went off when we went from extreme heat to monsoon. So, so anyway.
They're working. And we actually did use it during the route fire in Castake. We, we put out an evacuation message for that fire.
The zones sound exciting. Thank you.
Is that it? Okay, thank you. Thank you very much. It's always a pleasure. Okay, we're going to go to five community reports. And that's our wonderful library, Nikki Winslow.
Yeah. I'm the only paying that has a PowerPoint. I'll just go ahead and get started. So, good evening, council members, community members, as well as colleagues. So nice to be in person again. Have to say, I really like in person a lot better than Zoom. So those of you that were at the town hall meeting this past Saturday, apologies if this is duplicated information, but I wanted to share out about the building projects that we're working on right now. And thank you to Town Council for inviting me to speak and share information about this. So I want to start out with our most exciting news. We received an email from the California State Library last Monday, that we've been awarded over $7.5 million to address infrastructure needs as we renovate our two libraries. Due to the crazy cost escalation that we've seen in construction, this additional funding was needed to fully renovate the libraries in the way that the community deserves, and will also carry those buildings for decades to come. So that's very, very exciting news. Yes. I also wanted to remind everyone that the Measure Z funding is finally going to hit property tax bills in October. It's going to show up on the bill as special tax lien. So again, that's going to be helping to fund the capital funding that we have. If anyone has questions about that, it's going to be about five cents per square foot for single-family homes, and then flat rates for all other properties. Please send them my way. I'm happy to answer any questions that people may have. So I'll keep going still. So in terms of Bob Lucas design documents, we put those on the library's website about a month ago. We're going to be taking them to our Board of Trustees at their monthly meeting next Tuesday night. We're still looking for feedback on both building projects. We have a web, a page on the website, that's altadinalibrary.org/next-chapter. I'd encourage you to take a look. We update it with anything that's coming up or new as an update. Once the board approves those design documents, it's, it's an important step, because we're going through a conditional use permit process for the Bob Lucas branch. So by finalizing the design documents, that'll keep that moving forward, because it takes six to 12 months to get a conditional use permit. A few of the highlights of the design, which again, I encourage you to take a look on our website at, at the design documents, is we're going to be adding almost 1,000 square feet to the Bob Lucas branch. And for those that don't know, it's only 1,800 square feet. So that's about a 50% increase, which is really exciting. We're also going to have a designated literacy center and study rooms. For those of you that have visited, the, the literacy area right now is just kind of out in the middle of the library. There's not a lot of privacy for people that are getting tutored or taught English. So we're really excited to have a separate part of the library specifically for that. Let's see. We're also going to have, be doing roof replacement and upgrades to electrical and mechanical systems, which is important on a building that was opened in 1957. We'll also have a designated children's reading room, accessibility upgrades, expanded demonstration gardens, and an outdoor reading garden with seating, a trellis, and a fountain. Sounds great, right? We're really excited. So again, take a look at those design documents. We do have a survey on the next chapter page on the website, that you can provide information or thoughts on what you'd like to see in either of the library designs. And now that we have been given the grant money, and we know we're going to have that, the main library design is really going to start moving forward now. We had to know what our real budget was before we really started moving forward. Okay. So I did want to point out that both library locations will be closed on October the 10th. We're going to be having an internal staff development day. We choose that day every year, because it's Indigenous Peoples' Day, and a lot of government buildings are closed, so people assume we are anyway. So we'll be doing some staff development. Okay, so special programming. So September is National Library Card Sign Up Month. So if you don't have a library card with this, I'd encourage you to stop in or sign up online. You can get a digital card and have access to all of our resources online. This is actually Band Books Week as well. The staff have prepared a match game activity, that if you come into the library and fill it out, you'll be entered for a drawing for a gift card. And we're also celebrating Latino and Hispanic Heritage Month. There's several programs on the calendar. So please check out our events webpage. I'm also excited that we held our Poets Laureate Launch Event back in August. We had almost 80 people attend. It was like the most people I've ever seen at a poetry program, to be honest. The, the two poets that were selected are magnificent, and they're going to be doing monthly programming through April. So next week on the 28th will be their next program. So I highly encourage you to check it out. In addition to that, we have, like always, many, many, many programs. This Saturday is First to Go, Story of the Kotoka Family, which is a screening and Q&amp;A, which is a personal account of Japanese-American incarceration during World War II. I brought flyers about that program that are back on the table. We're also offering tonight, so you missed it, we offer virtual meditation. So we, we do that every couple of months. So please check that out. As well as all of our regular monthly programming that I always talk about every time I come. Lots of good programs for both all ages of children and teens. And then I did want to highlight, of course, our annual fundraiser, Taste of Dina, which is this Saturday. I also brought a flyer that's in the back. Our entire downstairs is full of the auction prizes. So please visit the foundation website and get signed up to participate in the online silent auction. Even if you don't attend the event, you can still participate and win some really cool prizes, including dinner with me. I would love to see you there. It's a really fun event. You can just visit the foundation website to get tickets or even show up that night. But hopefully, we'll see lots of you there. And it's a really great cause to support the library. Our Friends of the Altadena Library are doing a pop-up book sale, which I know everybody gets excited about, on October the 15th, which is a Saturday. Friends members get exclusive access from 10 to 12. So you should definitely become a member of the Friends. And then it will be open to the general public from 12 to 4. It's not in my presentation, and that's okay. But I did remember that we're also doing a Shred Day. So for, for those of you that need things shredded, which is lots of us, we'll have a truck at the library on October 14th, which is a Friday. Yeah. And as, as usual, I like to point out, if you have community events that you want us to promote through our Altadena Connections page, please send us an email at news@altadinalibrary.org, where we'll add it to the community calendar, which you can do as well. But we definitely want to promote all of our community events. And I think that's it. Thank you. It's a good question. I don't know. I think, I, no, it's not in there, but I think Shred Day starts at 10, and it goes until the truck is full, which from what I understand, happens every time. Like, I think last time, there was like 56 cars that went through.
Okay, we have some questions.
Okay.
Okay, um, go ahead, there you go.
Hi, of course.
What is the address that people can go on for the online auction?
Oh, it's altadinalibraryfoundation.org.
Yeah, I already went. It's fun, because every day I get outbid it.
It's so fun.
It's fun.
Good. Keep driving up the bids, Veronica. I like it. Yeah, there's some really cool prizes. One of them is like, you can get a tween laser tag for your kid at the library. So we have laser tag equipment, and we turn the lights off. It's really, yeah, that's one thing.
Yeah.
There's lots of good stuff.
And they, they add things every day, too. There's been some stuff added.
Yeah, it's like, I saw Bridget this morning, that it's overflowing downstairs.
Okay. Any more questions?
Ms. Winslow, thank you for all you do for the community. I am representing the Census Tractor that Bob Lucas is, and I'm super excited about the redesign. And I think you may have mentioned it, but if you wouldn't mind doing so, again, is there a place where people can go to see it and give their input?
Yes. So on the website, it's altadinalibrary.org/next-chapter. And if you guys want to point, post my PowerPoint, you're welcome to, and the links are in there.
Thank you.
Okay. Any more questions?
No? All right.
Thank you.
Good to see you.
Thank you. Yeah. Okay, now we have Parks and Rec. Sam's not here, but he sent someone in his place.
My name is Ryan Hicks. I'm the new sports coordinator. My name is Ryan Hicks. I'm the new sports coordinator for the North Division for LA County Parks and Recreation. I work at Loma Alta Park, but I cover Farnsworth, Charles White Park, Loma Alta. We have programs coming up starting October 1st, which is soccer and lacrosse. It goes from October 1st to December 3rd. We have the Tiny Top Program, which is ages 3 to 5, Monday through Thursday, 1 to 4 p.m. We have the Everybody Plays Drop-In Program, Fridays, 2:30 to 5:30. The Snack Program is from Monday through Friday, 3 o'clock to 4 p.m. Hispanic Heritage Night will be October 14th, 7:30 to the 8th. They'll be having snacks from 8 to 10 p.m. We'll be playing the movie Coco. Trick or Treat Village will be Wednesday, October 26th, from 5 p.m. to 8 p.m. There'll be carnival games, pumpkin carving, music, and candy. November 17th will be the Harvest Festival, which is a Thursday, from 5 p.m. to 8 p.m. And it'll be food, carnivals, games, music, and raffles. We're just now starting to get back into having leagues. Since the COVID, we haven't had any leagues or anything until now. But over the summertime, we had a program called the Parks After Dark Program, and they put me in charge of having an organization called Ballin' for Peace come to provide alternatives to gang violence and crime, teaching kids shoot a ball, not a gun. So we did, we offered them resources and entertainment. So we connected with the LA Clippers. We brought their mascot out, some NBA players. We brought the Lakers organization out. We brought some Harlem Globetrotters out, some streetball players from Harlem Globetrotters, and one in Rucker Park. And what we did, we had free clinics, football, basketball, yoga, and tennis throughout the LA County parks. We covered Title IX, which was the girls, ran the clinics as well. We had our grand finale at El Caruso Park. We had a football showcase with, we had a combine. We offered 250 backpacks to all the kids. And we did that third Friday. And then Saturday, we did it with the basketball program. We gave out more backpacks and brought the Clippers mascots and stuff come out for all the kids. So if you guys want to see the highlights and everything, we have it on ballinforpeace.org/pad, P-A-D. And you can check out LA County, parks.lacounty.gov for upcoming events at the recreation, Parks and Recreation.
Okay, thank you very much. Are there any questions? Any questions?
Parks.lacounty.gov and ballinforpeace.org/pad, B-A-L-L-I-N-F-O-R-P-E-A-C-E.org.
Okay. Dorothy? Councilmember Wong?
Thank you. I just want to applaud the amazing amount of programming that went on this year for Parks After Dark. And the staff, like, you know, literally busting, making it happen, right?
Right.
Was just amazing. And so I think the community definitely appreciates the hard work. I was just, you know, amazed, you know, just the vision of activity, and then how the activation occurred. And then I loved the, the color run, too. That was fun. So thank you, guys, for your work. Yeah.
Appreciate you being involved. Thank you.
Thank you. One more question?
I just wanted to say thank you on behalf of a very grateful Altadena for the Farnsworth Park Playground. I know they did a soft opening on Tuesday, on Thursday, and I was there with my son, who hasn't been to a lot of parks because of the pandemic. So he was thrilled. It's beautiful. It goes into the community so well with its brown and green woodland themes. So we're looking forward to the actual grand reopening. But great job, and thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you. That's why I'm asking for money for Charles White Park. Yes, because the parks are great. They're, they're just great. They're one of our best resources, along with the library. That's great. But okay, so we're going to move along to our committee reports. And we're going to, oh, I'm sorry. I'm so sorry. Oh, yeah. Okay, Dr. Thomas, we're going to do Chamber of Commerce Report. She ready?
Yep. They'll put her mic on. Go ahead, Dr. Thomas.
And thank you, Madam Chair. And before I- And before I say anything else to my chair and to our secretary and communications chair, to Vic, I want to thank them for what they did to make it possible for me to be able to attend this meeting. They just don't know how much it means to me, and I thank you so very much. It is, again, my privilege to report to you on behalf of the Altadena Chamber of Commerce. I say it every time, but for those, if there's anybody here that doesn't know, the chamber always is to support the businesses in Altadena, Altadena and the surrounding areas. So we have some exciting events coming up, but it's my privilege to just share a couple of them with you. September the 23rd, which is coming right up, we are hosting, along with the San Gabriel Valley Legislative Coalition of Chambers, a brunch and tour of SoFi Stadium. It's going to be an exciting time, and we have chambers coming from throughout all of San Gabriel Valley. On October the 13th, from 5:00 to 7:00, we will have a business mixer hosted by Outward Bound Adventures. And then on October the 19th, from 8:00 to 10:00, we will host a state-of-the-state power breakfast with Assemblymember Chris Holden at the Altadena Town and Country Club. In November, we'll host an emergency response and disaster preparedness mixer, and the details and times on that will be forthcoming. On December the 3rd, our annual sip and shop holiday celebration will return at Mariposa Junction from 12:00 to 4:00. So as you can see, we continue to perceive events that are designed, we hope to meet the needs of our diverse community. And we look forward to seeing each and every one of you at as many of these events as you can possibly attend. For more information on any of the events, visit our website at www.altadinachamber.org. And I hope I said that right, Veronica, because if I didn't, I shall correct. In closing, I would just like to thank all of our wonderful council members for your dedicated service to the community also. And to everybody else, thank you for listening to me. Madam Chair, now it's back to you. Thank you so much for your time.
Okay, thank you, Dr. Thomas. Okay, now we move on to our committee report. And we're going to start with our land use. Diane Marcusson is the chair.
Okay. The land use committee met two weeks ago, and we did not have any action items, but we did review a first draft of a document called Land Use 101, which the purpose of that is to help new land use committee members navigate through the process of land use. That's a document in progress, a work in progress. We will have, at the next land use committee, which is meeting, which is October 4th, I believe, we will have a presentation from the Historic Highlands Project. There is a group of homes along New York, south of New York, that are putting in to do, have that be a historical designation. And so anyone who's interested in giving public feedback for that, public comment, is welcome to the October 4th meeting. We'll also be putting notices out. That's what I have.
Okay, thank you. Any questions of our land use chair? Okay, we're going to move on to Safe Streets. Councilmember Wong.
Thank you, Chair Jones. I just wanted to give you guys a really quick update. October is Walktober. So again, through the Safe Streets Committee and a variety of entities, we're really working on encouraging people to activate in their community with the variety of walking events going on. And then at our last Safe Streets Committee meeting, we had the National Safe Routes to Schools Partnership give a presentation on how schools and communities can encourage walking to school. So it learned about safe routes to schools, safe routes to parks, and also Walk to School Day. So we had a good collection of parents and schools attend to learn more about that. And the meeting is recorded, so I'll put that on the website, altadinatowncouncil.org. And then the committee is Traffic Safety and Mobility, Safe Streets. And I think that's all I have to talk about right now. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. It was short, thank you. Is there?
Our next meeting is the 29th.
Oh, okay.
We'll have another meeting this, September 29th, the 4th Thursday at 7:00. We have our monthly meetings, so you can find that out also on the website. September 29th is our next meeting. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Any questions? Okay, moving on to our education committee. Councilmember Nat.
The education committee will be meeting virtually tomorrow, 9:21 at 6:00 p.m. And also, in partnership with Neighbors Building a Better Altadena, NBBA, we will be hosting a PUSD School Board District 1 Candidate Forum on Wednesday, October 19th, from 6:30 to 8:30 p.m. This event will be in person and will be streamed, and the location will be announced shortly. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Any questions? And for all those who don't know, our own Billy Malone is running for school board here in District 1. So, okay, good luck. Okay, next we move on to our Communications Committee. Nick Aronzen.
Thank you. This will sound like an end-of-year roundup, so excuse me for that, except that it's been one year since the Town Council Executive Committee graciously approved the formation of a new Communication Committee, and they appointed me chair. And in our first year, we took on a number of projects. Our first order of business was compiling a long list of potential projects and goals. It became very clear we had a lot of work to do, and we needed to take small bites at first. So I did separate the committee into two subgroups, one internal committee that would explore possible improvements and evolution of our inter-council communication, and one external to explore better ways of getting information to residents. Since the list of possible projects and goals was so lengthy, we chose to take projects one at a time. And over the past year, I just wanted to quick go over what the committee's been up to, because it's 14 really dedicated people I want to pay some honor to. We assisted in getting the word out about last year's elections, and then we moved on to beginning a local organization's asset mapping in hopes of forming a network of the incredible array of local special interest groups to better communicate and collaborate. We encouraged and helped form and run a retreat to better connect our town council internally. I think we had a good time at that retreat, maybe a little too good of a time. We began a high school internship program I'm very proud of for local students to become more aware of and involved with their community while earning their required community service hours. In the past year, we have arranged service work for over 60 students and signed off on or connected students with local nonprofits, racking up a total of nearly 500 service hours. This past weekend, we hosted a town hall, which I hope to create more of on a regular basis. And finally, we're just at the finish line of creating a couple welcome packs. One of those is for new council members, filled with guidance and vital info to help them come onboard, which we plan to have completed by the time new council members join us after the November election. And the other one is for new neighbors, which is filled with valuable info to help them maneuver their way through our awesome town. This one will be completed in the next couple weeks, and we will include useful contact info on local resources, as well as information helping them figure out how to contact county offices with a variety of issues coming up. And the packs will also include a rotating presence of local businesses we want to help support, and they will include giveaways, vouchers, coupons, highlighting our many incredible local businesses. As we begin, the packs will be focused on new homeowners. We will expand that, and we're in the works to expand it to all renters. And we will have a digital version available to current homeowners and renters throughout Altadena. We will have that digital version in the next few weeks on our town council website, I hope. And many of these ongoing projects, we have a wish list of many more, and we're looking forward to this next year. I want to thank my fellow council members for agreeing to this committee, for the executive committee last year for agreeing to put it together, and the members on the council who are members of my committee as well. By design, the committee is formed with seven residents and seven council members. As we finish our first year, I'm sure some committee members may be ready to move on, so I'm always open to new members. If you are interested in being a member of this committee, please feel free to reach out to me. My email address is on our website, altadinatowncouncil.org. But just for note, it's nick, N-I-C, dot Aronzen, A-R-N-Z-E-N, at altadinatowncouncil.org. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you. You guys have been busy. Okay, all right, we're going to move on. And this is our meat and potatoes tonight, the election committee. Our council member Sylvia Vega.
Good evening. I'm going to start with a general election update. The election committee met on September 15th. Important dates to remember for our general election applications, if you'd like to be a council member and run, are going to be due Friday, October 7th at 5:00 p.m. The candidate's presentation at the Altadena Town Council meeting will be Tuesday, October 18th at 7:00 p.m. The NBBA Candidate Forum is Wednesday, November 2nd, from 6:30 to 8:30. The forum will be in person and will also be streamed, and location will be announced shortly. Our voting dates will be Tuesday, November 3rd, from 3:00 p.m. to 7:00 p.m. And Saturday, I'm sorry, excuse me, Tuesday, November 8th.
And then Saturday, what's that date?
The 12th, yeah. I'm grateful Victoria's on my committee. Saturday, November 12th, from 10:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. The new members swearing in will be Tuesday, December 20th. Council members, I am asking you each to take a sign that we have here, applications now being accepted signs, and to place two in your census tracts in high-traffic locations. Our voting locations will be Patti Cakes at 1900 Allen Avenue, Altadena Main Library at 600 East Mariposa, Bob Lucas Library at 2659 Lincoln Avenue, and the voting posters are being updated and will be distributed and displayed by local businesses. Now the meat, that was the potatoes. Okay. Census Track 4611 has a vacancy due to the sudden passing of Councilmember Madeline Barber. We have three candidates who have submitted applications. Can you pass these down, Billy? Viye Vett, Stuart Gordon, Patricia Sutherland, and Otis Triplet. Each council member was emailed their statements, and you also have a hard copy in front of you now. Each candidate will have three minutes to make their statement. After the candidates have concluded, we will have a question-and-answer session, should any of the council members have any questions, and then the council will vote. Madam Chair, Veronica Jones will tell you the votes, a winner will be announced, and Captain Williams will swear the winner in, who will take their seat with the council. Will the three candidates please come up? And we'll start with Viye Vett, Stuart Jones. I'm sorry, Gordon. My apologies. Good evening.
My name is Viye Vett, Stuart Gordon. And I moved to Altadena in 2004. I was fortunate to marry someone that moved here in 1995. He loves Altadena. He is a retired sheriff deputy, also worked in Compton and retired out of headquarters. So he loves this city. So I'm a native of Los Angeles, but Altadena, I learned about Altadena in my high school years, which was like in the '70s. And it was like the best-kept secret. And so when I moved here, I'm like, this town seemed like it hasn't changed at all. You know, it kept its beauty, you know, its small-town feel, you know? So I was very happy when I found out he lived here and I moved here. So Altadena, it's been my home for now over 20 years. So I am a registered nurse by trade. I work for LA County. I have four children. I've also served on several different committees at work, advisory boards, as well as Neighborhood Watch in Los Angeles when I lived in Los Angeles. I work with the lead officers there and the different community councils within Los Angeles' Limerick Park area. So I'm familiar with working with the various city offices as well as neighbors. And I also believe in the ability for local government to make a real difference for local people. The council members are the voices of their communities. We represent, the council members represent the needs and the interests of the constituents and work to ensure that the needs of their cities are met. Often, council members are the first point of contact for residents who need help with city services and/or have questions with local laws and regulations. And I also believe in making decisions that is the most good, that enhance the quality of life for the community. Often, sometimes they're not easy, you know, they're hard questions, but we have to look for the greater good. Also, I believe in working closely with members to establish goals and objectives. And also, sometimes that's not easy as well. But we have to put differences aside and work together for the community.
Okay, that's your time right now. That was a lot. Thank you.
And thank you.
Thank you.
And I am, I consider myself honored to have the opportunity to present myself as a person of interest to be a part of this, your luxurious council. Thank you.
Thank you.
I like that word. Pat Sutherland?
I'm going to, if it's all right, read this, because I have a tendency to go off-topic, and I would like not to do that this evening, so. Good evening, council members. I know most of you, since we've worked together in the past. I was going to say it's nice to see the new faces that I hadn't met before, but I discovered that tonight, while there are some new faces here, I know you folks, and the ones that I haven't met weren't here tonight, so I'm sorry not to have met them tonight. I originally joined the council because I wanted to know what was going on in Altadena and because I had heard people complain about not knowing how to get things done around town. That is still why I want to serve on the council. I included in my summary of qualifications many of the projects I worked on as a council member, so I won't go over all of that again in great, in any detail. I will say, though, that my background in sales and financial management has helped me with many of the duties of a council member. I previously served on the Altadena Town Council for six years. I also have six years of experience on the land use committee, so I can hit the ground running for my census tract should I be elected. As a founding member of the film committee, I helped develop written information for residents to answer questions regarding Altadena filming procedures. In doing so, I interfaced with multiple county departments, including Supervisor Bargert's Office, Public Works, and Public Safety Representatives. The job of a council member can be challenging, and I know a lot more now than I did when I began, a lot more now. One important thing I learned is that there are a lot of other council members willing to help you, and I'm ready to share with others the institutional knowledge that I have developed from my terms on the Altadena Town Council. While I'm not currently a member of the council, I do serve on the community While I'm not currently a member of the council, I do serve on the communication committee as an Altadena resident. During the past two years, I've been keeping in touch with Altadena happenings by attending both land use and Altadena Town Council meetings, mostly virtually. Good communication is essential for a council member. I communicated with my census tracts at least monthly to share results of the council meetings and other items of interest, and if elected, I will work with Councilmember Peck as we decide regular, as we provide regular contact information for Census Track 4611. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you.
Otis Triplet was not able to attend this evening, so I am going to read his, that statement. "To whom I may concern, I'm a longtime resident of Altadena and watch the area change. Some improvements and some things like crime, loss of school, the increased age of the population moves me to use my experiences and knowledge to work with other members of the town council to come up with recommendations for addressing issues faced by the township. My experience working with youth and young adults has given some insights to possible solutions to some of the issues faced by the township, and I would like the opportunity to work with other council members to find ways to effective address some of the critical issues facing the township. I work well with others and feel I can be an effective member of a problem-solving team, the town council. Signed, Otis Triplet." So at this time, are there any questions for the candidates? Maybe we can have the candidates come up to address and answer any questions that the council members may have.
I just wanted to ask both of you if you have an idea of the time commitment for the town council. I think that one of the issues that we often come across is that people don't really understand that even as a volunteer organization, that there's a time commitment involved. So can you just speak to your general availability for meetings and collaboration?
Well, I'm afraid that I do have a pretty good idea of the time that would be needed to be a council member. And to be perfectly honest, since I would not be, if elected, I would not be a member of the executive committee, that kind of eliminates some of the work that I had, that I had done in the past. So I do have more time to devote strictly to the people in our census tract.
Of course, in regards to the time, I don't think that would be an issue with me if I am elected for the council.
Are you currently retired?
I'm in that process.
Okay, okay. Any more questions?
Okay, thank you very much. So council members in front of you, you have a ballot. If you can please vote, and then we will turn them, our ballots into Madam Chair.
And just to let you know, I don't get to vote. Unless there's a tie.
And then he's going to take Dr. Thomas's.
Oh, that's all right. Excellent.
Thank you.
While we're doing that, I just want to thank the three people who submitted. It's not easy to come here. It's not easy to put your name down and stand in front of everybody, and I want to gratulate everybody for doing that. Anyone that's willing to do that, I'm thankful for. So thank you, whatever the outcome, it's much appreciated.
Thank you for that, Billy. That's true, that's so true.
If you will hold yours up, I'll fill it out here. I'll share it with Veronica. Can you hold yours up to the camera at the top? Can I see it again?
We're just trying to get Dr. Thomas's.
So if you hold your paper up to the camera like that. Up just a bit. Up a little further, further, further.
By your glasses.
All the way up? Yep. Okay, thank you. Got it? I'll fill it out.
Okay, great. Okay, so that's, oh, there's.
Do you make sure the count is correct for the number of people that are voting? Just checking.
Okay, we have, how many people do we have voting?
A dozen.
Eleven.
So we have 11 people voting. Okay, and I have...
All right.
Yeah, 11. Okay, so I have 11 votes counted. Okay, so the winner tonight, well, I'm not quite sure it's the winner, but I know what's comes next, no.
Be careful what you wish for.
I'm only teasing, I'm only teasing.
Be careful what you wish for.
I know, be careful what you wish for. But it's Pat Sutherland.
And I do want to, just like Billy said, we have an election coming up. We have lots of room for volunteers and to help, and, you know, just to come see, get your feet wet to see what it is and join us, to help us do what we do. It's not easy, but it is rewarding.
Yes, Vi Ivett?
And I would just like to thank everyone, those who made it, those who made it not, just thank you and thank everyone for this opportunity, and I do plan to be more involved and volunteer, and hopefully next time I'll be on the council.
Yes. And we have your information, we will be calling on you, so.
But, okay, okay, we want to swear Pat in and have her take her seat up here with us. Welcome back. I don't have to make a new name tag.
I think right there is good. If you don't mind, raise your right hand and answer the following question. Do you accept the position bestowed upon you on behalf of the community? And do you pledge to faithfully execute all duties and responsibilities and to uphold the town council's bylaws and ethical standards during your term in office? Congratulations.
Thanks. Pat Sutherland, you could come shake your hands. Oh, I wanted to pitch with them shaking. Okay, we have general public comment next on the agenda. Oh, is there? Okay.
Captain Williams for staying this whole time and doing that. We really appreciate it, thank you. Congratulations, Pat.
Make him dinner.
I will make you dinner.
I don't, I don't think you...
That was Veronica's idea, but I'll do it, sure.
Yeah, that's a punishment, no. No. Okay, we're starting to have fun here. Okay. Yeah.
We have one public comment. If there are any other public comments, please make sure you complete the form in the back and bring them to the front. Public comments are two minutes. The council does not respond to public comment, but if you would like a response, and I think we have one public comment, she, should we handle the one? Yeah. There's no contact information on this, but if you'd like to leave it afterwards, you can fill it out. So I wanted to call up to the podium, is it Azita? Okay, please come up, and you have two minutes.
That would be difficult. I never spoke two minutes before.
Is that long or short?
No, I don't know how. Well, my name is Azita Milanian. I'm a resident of Altadena since 1993, and I'm a president of Children of One Planet, which is a nonprofit organization established in 2000 in Altadena. But prior to that, I have been an engineer at JPL. We are having an event, our mission is to, the mission of Children of One Planet is to, to make everyone understand what's happening with children around the world, especially in our community, and bring, and bring awareness and education, how to fight against children violence, hunger, and protect them, to be voice of the children in the community and in the world. So one of our campaigns called Dance for Hope America that came in 2017, but because of COVID, it didn't go anywhere. So we were trying to get into the school to bring dancing, music, art as a tool to bring mental, physical health to our children. And, but we are just using it as a tool to bring happiness, but we are teaching them many educational skills about mental and physical health and positive thinking and overall increasing their health. And by statistic, the health of mental, physical health of children are decreasing, not because of COVID, this has been happening for a long time. And we think with Dance for Hope America campaign, which we're going to bring in 2023, our event is going to be at October 22, at 5:00 P.M. at William Davis Memorial Building. We bring the famous ballroom champion dancer, musician. We are using international cuisine from Pasadena, Altadena restaurants, and bring the community together and teach them how great it is, music, dancing, and art, how it could help not only us as grown-up, the children especially. And Dance for Hope America campaign is going to come up in 2023, and we are trying to use the park and recreation as the, as a location for this community.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you. You did it, you did it.
Yep.
Okay, and the next public comment is Vi.
Welcome back.
And I'm very, when it comes to community, you know, I'm very active and just very concerned. So what my, my, what I put down there was resources for the unhoused. What I've noticed since I've moved here, there's been an uptick in the unhoused in the area. But what I want to know is if anything that we're doing to provide them resources, whether it's pamphlets, informations like that, I know I used to encounter a group because I walked, it was some young people right there behind the quicken stop in that area by the pet shop. So I would always have conversation with them, you know, to ask about, you know, if they knew about resources and things like that. So that's my question, you know, are we, do we have a pamphlet? Do we have information? Because I know the county have a lot of resources, you know, do we just have like a quick cheat sheet, you know, maybe the different businesses can have, and also maybe the, oh, Jabari left, you know, maybe the deputies can have in their car, you know, that they can give to them when they encounter them to let them know, here, these are some resources, you know, that maybe you can reach out if you're looking for assistance. So that was my question. Well, comment that I wanted to see, is that something that we can possibly get involved with to prepare?
No, I just want to say one thing, there's a big secret here in Altadena. Union Station is on Woodbury, and I know we don't normally respond, but there's Union Station, that's a big resource right here in Altadena, on Woodbury. It's hidden, but it's there.
Yeah, so I was thinking more like paper resources that, you know, that we can have or the businesses can have, and even deputies, when they encounter, you know, they can hear, you know, here's a pamphlet, here's some information that may can help you, that's what I was thinking. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Communication committee is on it. Okay, okay, that's it.
She may be asked to be on the committee.
I know, you should get her.
And is it for public comment?
Okay, no, that was it for public comment. Now, we took care of your public comment, right? Okay, so we're good. Okay, so now we're going to move on to our census tract reports. Forty-six oh-three-point-oh-one.
Thank you, Chair Jones. Two things, actually three. One is Dabney Street, what's concerned about street sweeping, and that led to other questions and concerns about street sweeping. So I just wanted to report that Dabney Street, even though it was posted, it's, it's been a, some back-and-forth stuff, but Thursday mornings from 7:00 to 11:00 will be the official street cleaning. So if you don't see them, I've got the contact at Public Works as well. And then if anybody else is interested in street sweeping signage, you can also contact Public Works, Steven Gutierrez. The phone number is six-two-six-three-hundred-three-two-three-three. Anyway, that's street cleaning. And speaking of street cleaning, I'm going to read for our residents at Loma Alta Park, the temporary sidewalk extension project at Sunset Ridge. This letter is informing residents of the upcoming removal of the temporary sidewalk extension along Loma Alta Drive and Sunset Ridge Road. The temporary sidewalk extension is located on the north side of Loma Alta Drive between Lincoln and Sunset Ridge, on the west side, between Loma Alta and a point one thousand feet north. The temporary project was implemented to provide additional space for pedestrians to walk and access Loma Alta Park and to facilitate social distancing required during COVID-19 pandemic. Due to the COVID-19 restrictions being lifted and the unsustainability of the maintenance of its current design, the temporary sidewalk extension will be removed. The removal will take place soon, September 2022. Public Works has received a wide variety of feedback from the community regarding the temporary sidewalk extension project. There will be a future meeting scheduled for the community to provide additional input and participate in shaping the future project for the area that may incorporate elements of the temporary sidewalk extension. Additional mailers will be sent out, and if you want to stay in touch, please email me so I can also make sure that you get that information. And then if you have any questions, contact Traffic Safety and Mobility Division at six-two-six-three-hundred-four-seven-nine-two. And I have the email for David Lee, D-A-Lee at dpw.lacounty.gov. And then the last thing I wanted to just talk about during this historic heat wave, the Meadows community experienced back-to-back days of power outage on 831 and 91, and then numerous outages, and the outage was for 12-plus hours a day at 108 degrees. So some of the activities that happened, SCE then provided, well, all, first of all, we had cooling centers, so I don't know if you all were aware of that, at Barnesworth Park, Loma Alta Park, and the Senior Center. This was an unprecedented-long heat wave. So SCE did come for four days and brought their community crew and handed out well over 150 of these outage kits, and I hope that we can get more of them for our community because they have amazing information on what to do, because some of it was, why weren't I notified, was because your information might not be correct in the SCE system, for example, and also working on protocol with these probably more lasting heat waves, you know, how can SCE and the community do better? So I just wanted to bring that up. And there will be an upcoming meeting to address the concerns of the Meadows residents with SCE. And I do want to thank SCE because we did have all of this extra ice and goodies, and a lot of the community members did come together to receive this information packet, which also came, it was called a sustainability kit, so it had a power charger and food and water, and it was just a really great way to talk to SCE, so thank you.
Okay, thank you. She was out there with boots on the ground. Okay. So we move on to eight point two, forty-six thirteen.
Yeah. That's me.
Oh, that's you.
That's me. I wanted to let everybody know, and I guess to focus on the town council as well if I haven't already said it, there is a project coming up to remove and replace Washington Boulevard and Altadena Drive. And I believe the census tracts that will be affected, forty-six thirteen for sure, forty-six twelve and forty-six oh-one. So we did this with New York Drive. The county is getting ready to have community meetings, which they will do, and make sure that everybody's in the loop. And I'm sure that the census tract folks will all stay in touch with the county as this moves forward. I think the beginning date is, I think, May of next year. So we have plenty of time to get ready for it and to make sure that we're all aware. Just wanted to say it ahead of time now, and we'll start having meetings, they'll start having community meetings coming up. Yeah? Dorothy? Vi Ivette?
Just a quick thing, like right now in the current state of the road, the crosswalks were completely, they're completely erased.
Where?
At Altadena Drive and Washington. So I just shared information. There was literally.
Well, so part of.
With the patchwork of the.
Part of the problem is, part of the problem is that the road was sort of coming apart. They had, they were supposed to do this work seven years ago and haven't, and seven years later, the road is coming apart. So we had to have it patched because there was a guy on a bicycle who complained about riding over the bumpy area, and so they did a temporary patching of that area, which is why. So we'll just wait.
Well, the crosswalk's definitely important because there's also, you know, people.
I know. The county, we can have, we can have the crosswalk discussion and with the county.
Thank you. Don't worry.
Any more? Any more discussion? Okay. All right. Thank you. That is going to call for number nine on our agenda.
Motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn. Okay. All those oppose? The meeting is adjourned at 8:54.
Please take your election signs from here. Don't forget your election signs.
I have ours up there.
Take your election signs.